All councilors are present for the record. Because of who is attending and the time constraints of one, I would like to skip immediately to new business, to item one, which is to discuss the letter received from the Rainy Lake Pickleball Association. Joe Nicolanski, President, please come forward if you would like.
Hello.
Just while we have you here to get on the record exactly what you're requesting before the council speaks with Deputy or Assistant Public Works Director Wallace, would you like to come forward as well?
Sure.
Okay, you had mentioned that you may or may not have something, so, no pressure, I promise. Could you please, Mr. Nicolanski, tell us exactly what you're proposing verbally, why it's a good thing, and why we should move forward with it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Proposing to relocate the roller hockey rink at South Falls or Holler Court area and move that to the outdoor hockey rink in Cary Park, so it's at an actual hockey-based facility, and then convert the existing roller hockey rink in South Falls to three new pickleball courts. And we got a quote from Morrison Seal Coating for $9,600 to completely convert and resurface that space to three new pickleball courts, and we'd like to offer as an association to fully pay for that if the council accepts. We would pay through it through our own fundraising efforts to make that happen.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And your association is growing rapidly.
By the day, like even since we last came here, our membership has probably increased by ten more people.
Good. Mr. Wallace, do you have any concerns about such a change in the community?
No, I do not. I think we've kind of come to conclusion that it would probably be good for both. We can move that hockey people over to the outside rink at Cary Park, and I think that would work fine, so.
Thank you.
There's no renovation that needs to be done at the hockey rink, is there?
Not to my knowledge. Probably just like sweeping and cleaning up the surface.
I just didn't know what the shape it was in, if it was possible, yeah.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
No.
And that, when they were at our last Public Works Committee, we had a couple rec hockey board members there for another issue, and they seemed to think it might even get more participation if it's all around the hockey area, too, so.
We, I would, at this time, if there is support, we could move this to the next city council meeting. I would just ask that with some of the constraints we're under, that with the painting or whatnot, that it's understood before we get there that would you be willing to cover any shortfalls? In the, I know that that was the quote, but the city, is what I'm trying to make the point of, is that you're doing this for your association, and that the city wouldn't be on the hook if it was left half finished.
Exactly. If for some reason Brock came back with something additional, or he needed extra, we would still cover that as an association, yep.
Okay.
How, I'm just, how's the fundraising going? Are you gonna have to do some to get the money to get it yet?
Yeah, we're at $1,500 raised so far, and we still haven't done our annual membership drive, so we'll probably get another grand or more from that. And thankfully Lois with Bacchus has put us into, contacted some organizations, like local area grant organizations, we'd be able to get some from.
All right. I was just curious, see how it's going for you.
Yeah.
We will, I would ask for a motion to move this to city council with the understanding that there may be just a couple little contingencies like we just discussed. Is there support for that?
So move.
Motion by Councilor Wagner.
I'll say it.
Second, and support by Councilor Buller, discussion. I'd just like to say thank you, watching, I live close by and watching your organization grow, and I've been on the phone with a couple friends, and they, oh, I gotta go, I gotta play pickleball, so it's a good thing, thank you.
Thank you for supporting us. It's great to see that facility getting used, and so many people are enjoying it, so really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
And I think a little credit needs to go to our Public Works Director that had the forethought to actually paint that pickleball court down there on the, where it goes. And if you live a little closer, not only do you get to see it, you get to hear it.
Thank you, Councilor.
Now, that much is all fine, by the way, with me.
At this time, call the question.
Aye.
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 Although, yes, we'll move that on to city council, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a great afternoon.
Thanks, guys.
At this time, I would like to move back to new business, or excuse me, old business, and we'll follow our normal routine, starting with our Human Resources and Safety Director report with Mrs. Sherri Stenzlin.
Good afternoon, everyone. Some updates under employment. The police officer application and testing process packet has been posted, and we've gotten some folks who are interested in it, so as I mentioned previously, we'll continue to collect those applications, go through the testing process, but any hiring costs or anything like that would be made separately to council. Also, you will see in your packets, you should have a request from Chief Manasa to put on an EMT certification class. The ambulance service personnel would do that, October 13th through March 2026. I think this is a great service that they offer to our community, and they offer it at a, at a, at a discount compared to other options which are out of town, so. Do you have any questions on that, or how that process works, or costs, or anything like that?
Well, my understanding is that in the new legislation, that aren't they covering some of the costs for first-time EMTs or refreshers?
They can, up to, yes, for services that have less than 5,000 calls in a year, they can cover, I think, is it 1,200 or 900, 1,200 per student? You could get reimbursed for after a year, after a year. Yep.
That's a, that's a good thing, just because the whole thing about the EMT is getting it started, so I think, just to lean on Chief Manasa, that that was the whole idea of the reimbursement program, so.
If there are no other questions, I would just ask, is this something that I can go ahead and advance to the next city council meeting for approval, for them to move forward, and we can start getting it out there? We actually have had some inquiries already from folks who are interested in the class.
For the EMT courses.
Certification, yeah.
I would entertain a motion to move forward with that. Motion by Councilor Buller.
I'll second.
You got it.
Okay, second by Councilor Kaler, discussion, call the question.
Aye.
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 Although, yes, we will move that to the next city council meeting. Do you have additional items?
I do.
Okay.
Oh, you mean under that or other things?
I'm sorry, please continue.
Either or.
I have other stuff. Let's see, during this last legislative session, Minnesota updated its Earn, Sick, and Safe Time Law. That, the changes were minimal, but I did update the city's policy on that. There's an update to the employee use notice. They changed the wording from as soon as practicable to as reasonably required by department policy. I think most folks are in agreement, this probably means about the same thing, but supporting documentation for an absence, that was another change, has been reduced from three consecutive workdays to two consecutive workdays. And as a reminder, that, that supporting documentation could be as simple as the employee attesting to the fact, yes, I was out for this reason, so. And employees may voluntarily trade shifts to cover E S S T absences, which I guess I would have assumed that was probably the case, but I know we cannot require them to find a replacement, but as long as it meets department policy, they can still trade if they want to. So those are the few changes I made to that. So with that, I would ask that I can forward that draft to the city council, next city council meeting for approval?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilor Buller to do so. Second by Councilor Holden, question?
Aye.
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 Although, yes, we will add that.
And then with regards to safety committee updates, so in June, I had the annual meeting with our last consultant from the League of Minnesota Cities. He, they come every year, but we, we talk about work comp claims, some property and casualty stuff. He usually focuses on one topic. This year, it was cybersecurity, so Todd joined us for that portion of it, and they have a lot of resources with regards to that, so Todd has that information. The other thing that he made us aware of is that they offer, through Minnesota OSHA, they offer a safety grant. So I know that we've talked about in several of our committees, moving forward with updating some of the safety here in City Hall with respects to putting in cameras and things like that, in the, on, one on each floor, as well as in the parking lot, and the safety grant could cover that if we were approved for it. So the cost would be about $8,800 to the city, you can get up to $10,000 for the safety grant, so there would be no cost. So I guess I would just seek your guidance on if this is something you'd be interested in, and if so, should we move it to the next city council meeting for official approval, or?
Yeah, I think so. That's my, I think it's important for the safety end.
What is the timeline on it, on the grant process?
You can, well, you, it's, it's open, there's, you can submit it at any time, but once you've been approved, you have, I think it's three months to get it done.
Would you be amenable to moving it to council, but allowing us to budget for it in '26?
I'd like to see cameras get put in a lot quicker.
Okay.
And we, and, and the thing is, I mean, my thought process was, we would not move forward with it if we didn't receive the grant.
Right.
So therefore, and then we would look to put it, something for budgeting for 2026.
Okay, well, that, that's, yeah, we just wanna have an understanding what we're, where we go with these things.
We would only move forward with it if we received the grant sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilor Holden has offered a motion.
Yes, I have.
Second. Second by Councilor Wagner, discussion or question?
Aye.
Aye.
Take it this way, aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, that is approved to go to the next regular city council meeting unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, now I'm done, unless you have any questions on anything.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
In terms of human resources that I would like to address this evening is, can you explain the city's employee digital policy with social media?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
Well, what I can tell you is it is addressed in our employee handbook, and there are different areas where they have, different areas have Facebook sites or pages that are managed through the department heads, and the city administrator is the person in general who speaks on behalf of the city unless someone else is authorized to do so by her. I don't know if that helps answer anything at all, but.
Well, I think my question is, is that when there's employees who work for the city that make comments that may be derogatory or misleading in nature against the city council, is that addressed?
That's a really tricky one.
And I would.
Yeah. It's, it, it is really, it is something that if, depending on what it is, we would most likely need to get our labor attorney involved in. For the most part, they do have the right to free speech, and so comments can be made, and I guess it would depend on the level, or the severity of the comment and how derogatory it was, and so I'm gonna give you Chelsea's answer, maybe. It's a, it's a pretty gray area with regards to social media and what, how employees comment.
Right, and I would also add to that, that if that stemmed from misinformation coming from someone above them, that was not a council action, that that's something I think the council should take very seriously, because I think that earlier this evening with the budget process, that if we're gonna get caught in the middle and we're gonna get run over, we represent the constituents of our community, and we're all elected to do so, and it's important that we carry out that function, so we have business to take care of. But I wanted to inquire because I know that that's in there, so, that's fine, we can review that.
That is probably my least favorite policy of all.
I assumed it was. Thank you.
Yep.
Next on our agenda under old business would be Fire Marshal Baldwin with a rental licensing report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. In your packet is the June 2025 rental licensing report. This is the end of our rental licensing period from July 1 of '24 to June 30 of '25. For the month of June, 52 inspections were completed. There was 28 inspections remaining at the end of the month, end of the fiscal year. Those have all been taken care of in the first two weeks of July. There were scheduling conflicts with some of the landlords, had to change their scheduling last minute, so we're down to one inspection that was not completed as of last week. 806 inspections completed in the rental licensing period, June, July 23 to July 25, excuse me, July 25. And as you can see, the corrections identified are similar to the ones you see every month. There has been some new changes to smoke alarm laws with HUD, and everything is going to a sealed unit now. We've talked about that in the past, that's becoming an option. A lot of times, we're seeing the tenants in these rental properties taking the batteries out of the smoke alarms and disabling them. So now they're coming with sealed units with 10-year batteries in them, so they're trying to alleviate the issue, you know, if there's an emergency in the home, it's not because they're not being notified because the battery's out of the smoke alarm. So some new things changing on that end, but other than that, it's just a few of the smaller items that the landlords are addressing as they're notified, so. Any questions on that?
I don't have a, I just a comment about, from watching or reading the news, about the fire at the assisted living out east in Massachusetts, I know it's a big building and stuff, just some ports of having working, smoke detectors, you know, to alert people. So when people think, you know, I'm sure you get a lot of, it's kind of a pain in the butt, whatever, we gotta have these, but when you want them, you want them, you know.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's unfortunate, you know, nine lives were lost, 30 others were injured, and, you know, a smoke, smoke alarm is early activation to notify you of an emergency, and I don't, I haven't read the details on what happened there, but apparently something went terribly wrong. And, you know, since we've implemented rental licensing, you know, it started off a little rough, we had a lot of pushback, but our landlords, you know, 99% of our landlords are on board, they support it, and they've seen the change that we've been able to implement through this process. And we've seen reduction in our fire calls, too, on a yearly basis, so, you know, like I said, it was a bumpy road to start, but I think we're in a, headed in a good direction with it.
I, Councilor Holden grew up in a home where Smokey the Bear was a big deal and prevented forest fires, and clearly, your efforts have paid off that knowing, you know, not being the most knowledgeable person about fire departments, but the, what's going on with the prevention is certainly working, and so we appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's good, and, you know, just so everybody's aware, we provide smoke alarms free of charge to any household. It's a little different for commercial properties, but anybody out in our community that has a house without smoke alarms, we will come and install them for free, and that, we get those smoke alarms from a grant from the Red Cross. So just like to, you know, get that out to the public, because, you know, it's shocking how many homes you go into just on any sort of inspection that still doesn't have them. And that's the same as, you know, carbon monoxide is not something we supply, but it's education on why you need it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please continue.
2025 blight report, as of the end of June, beginning of July. As you can see, we're moving through the summer, got roughly 150 notices that have been sent. Cooperation corrections identified, has been pretty good this year. You know, once the, the property owner's getting their notice, they have their seven days to correct the item, and they're working through that or calling and asking for an extension to get it done. There's still a lot of properties that we are maintaining that have been an issue the last couple of years, if they're either in tax forfeiture, some, some sort of family event that has left the property vacant. So we're working through it. I do have a couple problem properties that we're trying to find the correct way to address, so myself and City Attorney Nelson went on a little drive last week, and we're trying to figure out the best way to navigate some of these ones that we have continual issues with, that we're getting complaints from our community. So we're working on that. We do have about 10 vehicles in the impound yard that have been towed, dating back to the last time their license was 2018. We did get what, get rid of one last week from 2017, so a lot of inoperable vehicles in our community unlicensed, that I think we've been kicking this can for quite a while with dealing with these vehicles, and now they're seeing that we're taking it serious because we have a place to bring them. So the one person came and reclaimed their vehicle last week, cost them over $700 between administrative fees towing and the daily storage fee, so we have to, we had to do it to get their attention, because otherwise, they continue to sit there and just create issues in our alleys, in our, on the properties within our community, so. Moving forward with it, but there's, you know, a lot of them are a process, nothing can unfortunately happen in a week's time, so extensions and different timelines with these property owners. Questions?
Questions for council.
Good work.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I quick piggyback?
Yes, please.
On this report? He called me last week. An update on one of our properties, O'Leary Construction, that had gone to trial, found guilty, he, and sentenced, is still not cooperating, so there is another avenue we can look at, just so you're kind of thinking about it, maybe put it on the agenda for next week. You, we can do what's called a civil nuisance abatement complaint, but with that, it's essentially the city goes in and cleans it up, and then they collect, they try to collect from the person, if they can't collect from the person, we can hopefully assess it to the taxes, but it would be an upfront city cost. So I don't know if you want to push it that far, or don't want to push it that far. It's, it's, it's a lot of stuff, so I don't think it would be a cheap cleanup, but maybe to start thinking about it. Jared or I have the file to show some of the pictures, if you wanted to see it at a later point, but just wanted to plug that in your brain. That's okay?
Thank you. Would that, why don't we add that to the agenda, and we can, I'll make the decision?
Items removed, if we were to dispose of them, seeing that there's a lot of scrap metal and that kind of stuff, can that offset the cost?
It can. It's a, we'd have to include that in the court order, that we retain possession of it, that's a harder step, because mainly, we have to get rid of the stuff that we don't want to keep, and he doesn't want to keep, the other stuff that's not allowed in city limits, we could potentially sell, he could tell us if there's a different place that he wants to store it, and we can charge him to move it there, but that one's a little bit hairier, but potentially, yes.
Okay, thank you. So why don't we go ahead and we'll put it on the agenda, and then whether it comes on or off at my liberty, we'll just communicate about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I have a motion? To move it to.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Next on our agenda for the committee of the whole old business, number four, our building official monthly report, Mr. Kelly Myers, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. In your packet is a general report of the year, what's been going on. We have seen an increase in residential permits, which is very common for this type of year, a lot of the small repair type options that people are doing, and of course, with the hot, warm weather, there's lighting air conditioners, that type of stuff. The school's getting a lot closer to some of their projects, they're actually, bids are getting, hopefully, let, or these different phases of what they have going on, I think they're kind of defining what they're gonna be doing. Zoning activity has been pretty calm, actually, it's been pretty good, because we're looking at some parcel splits, which, they do parcel splits because they're making their lots smaller, which is allowing more construction room. So we've did a lot of that, and probably the highlight of the whole thing is, is Ronnie's is getting really close to their phase two ending. Sounds like they're gonna be pretty much ready by the middle of next week, and the next week, and the next couple week period, and then they're looking at a grand opening at the, which is very exciting. It's a big addition to our downtown district, and hopefully, a lot of you have seen it, and it's, it's getting bigger. Other than that, basically, the basic stuff's going on, you know, there's work going on. I always like to see a little bit more of the bigger things, but always talk, but nothing we'll look forward to share with you at this time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Yeah. Moving back to new business, having already addressed item one, we will address item two. I will invite Chief Kosicki forward, and this would be to address police squad car colors and markings.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
You received my letter as to the findings. We discussed them in the public safety meeting, too, so I'm here to answer any questions or, or any other information you need.
I just have one question, which would be, I've had a few calls on this, and I've been here for some of the discussions, is that something that we could implement going forward?
Yes.
Going away from?
And that would be my recommendation. We're not looking at getting a new squad for, the earliest would be 2027, possibly after that, but I would recommend to avoid unnecessary costs to do that, and I think to implement a new design for the squads, or go to the black and whites. The history of this is kind of fairly simple, and nothing nefarious at all, it was uniformity, we started in 2018. We found that having the black squads with this decal, number one, all the squads were the same, and number two, it actually increased the resale value, and we avoided costs with the wrap coming on and off, so. Again, if this is something the council wants to do in the future, when we start through attrition and also ordering new squads, that would be more cost efficient.
through attrition and also ordering new squads, that would be a more cost-efficient solution. I think that answers your question. That's kind of my recommendation, anyway.
Thank you. Mrs. Nelson, and that would be your recommendation as well?
From a legal standpoint, that works. I have no fiscal recommendation, if that makes sense.
Right. I'll be more, okay.
But yes, they're fine now. I think they'd be fine to stay, but if that's the goal, they're fine now, they'll be fine changed.
And to clarify, the nature of my question for us sitting here is the whole dereliction of duty that we're now acting on your advice.
Okay.
And that's what I wanted to be clear about.
And I would, just to add, I would also bring you both options, the current, when we order a new squad, as well as the black and white, so you can see the cost difference. If you guys decide you want to go with that, bearing in mind that according to you, we're compliant, if that's something you want to do, I'd provide both options, and it'd be up to you guys which option you'd want in the future.
And I, thank you, Chief. I would encourage that, I think one of the ways to resolve some of these situations by folks that do care in the community is that we continue to communicate with the expectation that there can be change, and that this is how things are right now, but they don't always have to be that way forever. So I'm trying to be reasonable, and I know you are with the city's pocketbook, which is appreciated.
I think that's a good way to go. And then when the time comes, let us know and see what your decision will be.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other business to come before this Committee of the Whole meeting? We will move on to board and commission reports, starting with the Airport Commission Councilors Buller and Holden.
Roof's done, right? At the terminal building? And it turned out great.
The only other thing they've got now are updating the cameras.
Right.
That are totally, totally obsolete, and that was through a grant there, too, I believe, and then they're doing the runway, working on the runway. And it's difficult, the same thing, it's, but summer work.
The company that worked on the roof did an awesome job. We got a report from Thor that they did a great job of getting it done. They had, you know, a little bit of weather there with some rain, good testing for what they did, and there wasn't a drop of rain in there, so that's good news. I mean, it's a big plus, and it's all paid for. So.
Moving on to KEDA, I am going to ask Councilor Kayler for the report, being that I missed the last meeting, which was my first city meeting I've missed.
Well, I also missed that KEDA meeting.
I'm sorry.
Because I was here, we had a ban shell meeting.
Yeah, I made that meeting.
Mike, what?
Counselor? Yeah, I had to think about that. I was there. And yeah, we had good discussion, discussed about the end of school. They had a North Star there, and also Menkota, and trying to figure out a way, you know, to get people in there, some kind of, whether it's a business or a school or whatever, so that we're not forgetting about. Right now, there's no power in there, and so that was probably the most discussion in that KEDA meeting was about the end of school, what we can do to put her back some kind of operation, so.
It's hard to believe that it's in that good of shape and that old already.
Yeah, but I think we're a little concerned about not having power in there. We're going to have to get power in there, you know, by winter time and all for, you don't want the place to fall apart either. If you're going to present it for somebody to buy it, there's going to have to be power back in there. And right now, there's none in there, so. That was the big discussion on that, in our regular KEDA. I served on there before, so I was familiar and paid all the bills and did all that, so.
Thank you for attending, by the way.
Yeah.
And I stand corrected, Counselor, we both missed.
We did, but I can update, so we have a meeting on Wednesday. I'd just like that we forgot about the last call, so we didn't mention the ceremony over in Fort Francis that we had with their mayor and you saying some kind words about each other and signing the friendship declaration, and there is actually a good turnout from both sides there. So I thought it was really good and enjoyable, and.
And everyone either knows each other or is related.
Yeah, and as I say, I got to revisit some of my youth from when my grandmother lived over there, so yeah.
Thank you. Moving on, finally, to North Cooch Sanitary District, we have some changes coming up.
I understand that. I haven't heard what the final is yet, but.
We're meeting tomorrow at 8:00.
Okay.
We'll be discussing the reconfiguration of the board. We advertised for a board member at large, but we wanted to add to it, which would be someone that would be taken care of, would be going to East Cooch meetings, going to if they have an issue or whatever, but that person would represent the whole sewer district as one board member there. That's been advertised, and we just need some recommendations from each one of the entities, East Cooch and I Falls, on who is going to be on our board or who's going to represent us, and hoping to have that done by the meeting in August, so that we can go ahead with doing the reconfiguration and then just go on with our new board. We did realize one problem here just last week. We had a budget committee meeting, we had four people there to go, we can't do this anymore, we got a quorum. With eight or nine of them before, we never had a quorum. Now we're going to be down to seven, so we got to cut back, and it's just those little hidden things that are kind of like, oh. But yeah, it's going good, though.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Thank you. And when is the next North Cooch meeting? Just I haven't.
Tomorrow morning, 8:00.
Okay. The August meeting, I'm sorry, I think it's later than.
August, look.
Mid-month, yeah.
Yeah.
And if you don't have it, that's totally okay.
I think it's August 19th, yeah, 19th.
Thank you.
Yeah. Wednesday.
Other business? Is there any comment from the public, which, if you'd like to come forward?
I'm a little incensed with the chief's letter, and I know that you guys are going to take this up again, maybe at the next meeting, is that true? Discuss this at the next meeting, what your decision is here?
We certainly can.
Well, I hope you do. Some of you know I was a goalie, and goalies get hit in the headlock with the pucks, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to let this thing slide. I'm serious about it. If I have to write to Keith Ellison, it's up to you guys. I don't believe what Chelsea's interpreted the law as, I don't think that's accurate, and I'll call you on it, face to face, you know. To me, it's very serious. I initially was not again, not for the expense of changing the colors, but when I realized that this is a violation of state statute, in my opinion, anyway, and I'll go to the mat on that, that if you decide to let this thing go, and you're found not in compliant, it's going to be a serious mark against each one of you and our city, so.
Mr. Calder, I want to stop you, not just out of the general nature. One, this being about law enforcement, I just hope that whatever the outcome is, that it's respectful, being that the profession. The second one is, I don't believe, and I will make sure right now, I don't think the councilors can be liable individually if we're following your advice.
No.
So basically, the process, if that occurred, would be we acted in the capacity of the council with our city attorney's advice. So I just, I don't want to be threatened that way, and I know the other councilors.
I'm sorry if you feel that way.
Please continue.
And in the article I wrote in the paper, I mentioned that, that it would be the city of International Falls, the state of Minnesota versus the city of International Falls. Now, like I said, if you don't want to, you can read the statute, it's clear, and by the chief going to the vendor as a resource to decide that this was compliant is totally ridiculous. You don't go to someone that sold you the bad goods to confirm that this is a state statute. And the fact, the other fact in that letter that the chief just wrote, it doesn't tell you how many squad cars had the ghost paint jobs in all those cities. They may have been in compliant as far as the number of vehicles, but how many fleets are totally with ghost paint jobs? It's obvious, and it's clear, this is a violation. And one last thing.
Please.
This is not a personal thing between the chief and I, but I love his family. His family has contributed a lot to this city. I'm friends with members of the family, and so it's not a personal thing between the chief and I. It's just, this is a matter of principle, a matter of law, as far as I'm concerned. And if we're going to be a society of law and order, my God, could the chief at least abide by the law? And to me, it's clear. That's, thank you.
I think he's abiding by the law.
I don't believe so.
I think he is.
I.
And I back, I back our city attorney.
That's good.
It's been followed, it's been checked on.
Chief.
That's what I follow.
Counselor, Chief Koschek had raised his hand, and he may want to come forward. One thing I want to clarify, I believe that this occurred with Chief Mastin when we went to the style of vehicle.
Yes.
So this was not Chief Koschek's doing, I won't, please, chief.
You're right, and I just wanted to add that I'm not, I'm not going to the vendor for the advice, I went with our city attorney. If she would have told us we're not compliant, I'd immediately be changing the squads. This issue was broached in 2018 with the former chief and the former city attorney. The same conclusion was raised. It isn't anything personal, I appreciate you coming forward with this. It's an important discussion, I just, at the end of the day, I have to rely on, to be frank, someone more intelligent than I am, more well-versed in the statutes than I am, just like all of you do. So I'm not, I don't want anyone to misunderstand, I didn't call the vendor and say, is this okay? I had extensive conversation with Chelsea, I lean on her for advice, if she's saying that we're compliant, that's why I'm going to listen to her. So, and vice, and if she would have said we're not compliant, we would have taken immediate steps to change it, because we can't have that, so.
Yeah.
I just want to let everyone, I didn't contact the vendor to say, are we okay? Councilor Wagner had asked how many approximately cities are employing this decal. That was what that information was for. So I apologize if that wasn't clear in the letter, it was kind of a condensation of a lot of the requests I got during the time. So no, I didn't, the vendor gave no legal advice at all, I've only ever talked to Chelsea about it, so. And I do appreciate your input. No, I'm not, I'm not, it isn't that, I just wanted to make it clear, I rely on her for legal advice and not a random vendor, so I don't want that getting out there. And like the mayor alluded to, I do appreciate your concern, I'm just saying, if she's saying we're compliant, I have to trust that we're compliant.
Okay.
So, no, there's.
Thank you both. At this time, it is 4:51 PM. Is there any additional business or public comment to come before the council? Seeing none, and before I, we have a meeting immediately following this meeting, which I would like to call for 5:00, which would give us approximately a nine-minute break before we begin our special city council meeting. This meeting is adjourned.